Call the order, the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. And we'll have a roll call and note that the mayor is on vacation and so is Councilman Lang and Councilman Norfeld is also out today. So I'm Steve Vincent, I serve as the mayor of Pro Tem. We have an opening ceremony and we'll turn the time over to Councilman Tongkun.
All of you stand up and do the pledge of allegiance quickly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That sounds really good with a lot of people here. Okay, on our next one agenda, we have special recognition, usually we look for either other elected officials or scout groups and I don't think I see any here, otherwise we let them come up and introduce themselves. Next, we'll move to the approval of minutes, we have the minutes of August 16th that need to be approved.
Vote for approval of the minutes of August 16th.
A second. Have a motion in a second, any modifications or changes to those minutes? Seeing them, we'll call a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimous. Next on our agenda, we have awards and proclamations and we have this proclamation declaring night after school and we'll turn the time over to Councilman Bueller for this.
Thank you, mayor. This proclamation is submitted for American Preparatory Academy, which has two campuses in West Valley City. I have visited each of those campuses and been very impressed with the children and the faculty there. It's a little difficult to describe, it's different than other public schools. It's a charter school, the children are uniformed, but they are happy, it's a cheerful discipline that I know at those schools. I'm also the chair of the CEP, which is the Community Education Partnership, which provides after-school programs in many West Valley City schools, not including American Preparatory Academy, although we're trying to do the same things that they're doing there. I'm happy to read this proclamation honoring American Prep and declaring August 27, 2016 as Lights On After School Day in West Valley City. Whereas high-quality after-school programs not only keep young people healthy and safe, but help foster meaningful relationships, inspire learning and career pathways, promote civic engagement and community service, provide worthwhile and challenging activities, develop talents and strengths, and increase overall success in school and life. And whereas research indicates high-quality after-school programs that provide expanded learning opportunities for young people outside the school day help to improve academic achievement, increase attendance and social behavior, and support working families. And whereas in Utah, seventeen percent, over ninety-nine thousand of kindergarten through grade twelve youth are responsible for taking care of themselves after school. And whereas of all Utah children not currently enrolled in after-school, forty-seven percent, over a quarter of a million children, would be likely to participate if an after-school program were available in their community. And whereas ninety-two percent of parents are satisfied with the after-school program their child attends. And whereas seventy-three percent of after-school programs are located in public school buildings. And whereas ten percent of Utah's kindergarten through grade twelve children participate in after-school programs, including seven thousand one hundred and ninety-two kids in programs supported by the U.S. Department of Education's Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers Initiative, the only federal program dedicated to after-school. And whereas American Preparatory Academy has four hundred students attending after-school programs each day, in twenty-seven different after-school programs, including eleven study hall sessions each day from kindergarten through twelfth grade, including S.P.E.D. tutoring, Sistema Utah Music Programs, which include all percussion, string, wind, and brass instruments, as well as voice training and music theory, robotics, coding club, app camp, geography club, Euro Club, Shakespeare, green card club, politics club, drum line, jazz bank, poetry, adult English classes, science club, and math club. And whereas Lights On After School is a celebration of after-school programs promoting the critical importance of quality programs for youth by ensuring lights stay on and doors remain open for all youth during the out-of-school time hours. Now therefore, we the mayor and the city council of West Valley City do hereby declare August 27, 2016 as Lights On After School Day in West Valley City.
Thank you, councilman. Next on our agenda is the opportunity for a public comment. This time period is, we allow for, have thirty minutes here that we allow open for the public to make comments. If you come up, you have up to five minutes to make your comments. And just know that this isn't an interactive time between us and you, it's time for you to give us your two cents worth and then we may be able to give you some direction as to who on the staff might be able to help you if you have an issue that needs to be addressed. So we'll start by those who have signed up. We have Paul Nichols. And when you come, please state your name and your address so it can be recorded.
Paul C. Nichols, out of Fifty-Sixty Speed, Twenty-Nine West, Forty-One Hundred South. I'm here about the traffic again. I'm getting run over every time I try to pull in my driveway on Forty-One Hundred South. And it's just getting worse and worse, the construction up there. I never see an officer, maybe once, at eight-thirty every morning going to the substation down the other place. So can you help me in any way?
Well, direct that to the chief, so.
Yeah, well, the chief, I talked to him two, for a year and a half now, still don't get no answers. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Larry Thorpe.
Hi, I'm Larry Thorpe and I live at nineteen-sixty-six Wilson Avenue, which is in Salt Lake, but I'm here for representing my parents on Thirty-Five Eighty-Six Vespa Drive. I'm the executor of their trust of their estate and Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, my comments are directed to you, I guess. And so my comments are regarding a conditional use analysis permit that is being requested by Boart Longyear, requisition number C-27-2016 at Twenty-Four Fifty-Five South, Thirty-Six-Hundred West. And I guess it's zoned M for manufacturing, I'm assuming that's what that means, it's twenty point zero nine acres. So I grew up in a beautiful home on Thirty-Five Eighty-Six Vespa Drive and I'm the executor of my parents' estate, who currently reside at that location. Originally, the area behind our home was zoned residential for additional homes to be built. However, we believed that the contractor ran out of money and was not able to fulfill his dream. Needless to say, the field that was behind our home remained a field from the time my parents moved to the area nineteen-sixty-five to nineteen-eighty-five, when a proposal, when a new proposal came into existence. Mervyn's, the now-defunct commercial retailer in our area, proposed moving its offices and some warehousing to the field behind our homes. And this would mean lots of trucks and additional noise in our backyards. The neighbors were against the warehouse being built, as they had hoped for residential homes to add to their property values. Commercial, let's see, the commercial and residential people, a commercial building next to our homes would not improve that situation, they felt that it would not help with their property values. Many residents frequented City Hall on Redwood Road in an effort to keep the residential area away from the manufacturing and commercially, and the commercially proposed zone. However, in nineteen-eighty-five, what the neighbors understood to be a permanent solution to the division occurred. An agreed-to buffer was adopted into the zoning plan that would agree, that would create a beautiful noise divider and buffer line with trees and distance between the two entities. My mother was one of those that fought for this buffer and beautification and noise-reduction initiative, as she went back and forth many times to preserve the green space and keep our neighborhood, our neighborhood, safe. Preservation of the green space and buffer between the neighborhood and the commercial business was agreed to by both entities, the owner and the neighborhood, in nineteen-eighty-five. A permanent buffer would be designed, as they understood it, with grass and trees to retain the beauty and distance between the two entities. The buffer would provide for reduced noise and added beauty to the area. Without the buffer, the value of the existing homes and any future residential developments would be diminished. The Mervyn, then Mervyn's left the location after they put that in, they put in the seventy-six foot buffer and along the way, and then a thirty-five, forty-something foot buffer down towards the end. Mervyn's left the location and other tenants have moved in since then. And they've occupied the space in the area and they've treated that buffer as a buffer, just so everybody's been happy all along. Today, though, Boart Longyear, a mining company that's located, headquartered down One Hundred and Eight South Riverfront Parkway in South Jordan, is proposing to move their storage facility that's located on Twenty-Six Forty South, Twenty-Six Forty West and Seventeen-Hundred South in Salt Lake City, which is a junkyard, and some more management buildings that are on Twenty-Seven Forty-Five West California Ave. They're proposing to move all of that into this one location behind the residence, behind the neighborhood. And they have proposed to turn this buffer, beautiful area, into a junkyard. They want to rip out all the trees, they want to rip out the grass, and lay down dirt and rocks, and put their mining equipment, or they say, park it there and let us sit there for a while. So they can, it'll just turn into the junkyard that's over on Twenty-Six Forty West, they're just gonna move it from Salt Lake over to West Valley. What that will cause was dirt will, dirt will be flying around the area and will make much more difficult for the people to clean and it would be a lot worse than just having had the field in the first place, a mature field. We're requesting that this proposed junkyard not be allowed to move into our backyards. We're willing to entertain other suitors, but not a company that would detract from the beauty of the area, as the other, as the other commercial areas that have moved in, Firestone and all the other people around us have done so good of a job trying to make it look nice. And you guys have allowed that to happen. And this, and we don't want them to break this agreement that was negotiated over thirty-one years ago. So my request is that you please disallow this request of any type of entity to locate itself behind our neighborhood that would diminish the beauty and the good air quality that West Valley City has worked so hard to achieve. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Thorpe, give me the address again.
Twenty-Four Fifty-Five South Thirty-Six Hundred West. It's the old Mervyn's warehouse on Thirty-Six Hundred West, as you go down the street that way. We just don't think it should be turned into a junkyard, especially ruining all the property values of the neighbors in that area. There's a lot that have moved in because of the buffers and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get to you in a minute.
Mr. Thorpe, could you please give the, or your telephone numbers?
Yes, it's eight-zero-one-six-nine-four-eight-nine-six-nine. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have another meeting I have to get to.
Okay. Richard Taylor.
I put mine on Thirty-Six Fifty South Thirty-Five One Hundred West. My name is Richard Taylor. You each have a copy of one of these. Basically, it's covering, I gave, I had a talk with Mayor Bigelow when he said he would present this to you. And what I am looking to do is promote my book through West Valley Resources or whatever, and I will donate all of the proceeds to West Valley. This James Frey wrote a million little pieces and he got an offer for it to sell eight million copies before they found out he had made a most of it up. I, in the year two thousand, had a stroke and an angel came to me one night in the hospital to heal me of it. So that's been sixteen years ago. And I tried every way I could to get this published and I self-published it, but now people need to know that it's in there. And if it takes me to having a whole bunch of business cards made that your people can hand out and whatever they do, see, it's not a special thing for me, it's for everybody. So I can't see how this will run against whatever else they might say about it, because I'm not there to make a penny up. So it's up to you whether it goes or doesn't go.
Thank you, he has given us a copy of this, so thank you. Dave Metzger. I know why you're here.
Well, that's good, I'm glad. It's David Metzger, Sixty-Nine Zero Two West, Forty-Sixty-Five South. Mayor Pro Tem and council members, I'm grateful for the opportunity to meet with you tonight and present just a couple of my concerns. I'm a member also on the community council of Orchard Elementary. And we have an issue that is of importance that I think many of you are aware of, because we've brought this up before about the traffic issues that happen around the school. The issue that I'd like to talk to you about tonight is the fact that the parking lot of the school has a problem, has a flaw, and that there's a significant ramp upwards as you leave the parking lot. And come wintertime, in icy conditions, and Councilman Christensen is aware of that, that can be quite an issue, of cars leaving, it becomes a safety issue, people are having to help push cars out there. Anyhow, this has already been reviewed and approved, the district has set aside funds to remodel the parking lot aspect of it, but there is still an unfinished strip of city road to the west of the school. In speaking with Mayor Pro Tem Vincent, he had shared with me that this was originally in the budget for twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen with the city, but unfortunately it was cut when city funds, funds from the state were then shorter than anticipated. I approached city manager Wayne Pyle about this and he, following the conversation with Councilman Vincent, and he said that they actually had looked to put that funding back in place to make sure this would happen, but he expressed doubts that it would happen before the wintertime. And so, council, this is why I'm here tonight, as well as many others of the, the community council from Orchard Elementary, as well as Principal Chandler and other, other members of the faculty, because we're very concerned that, that this happened in a timely manner, specifically before the snow flies. The district has set aside funds to do this for over a year now, approaching two years, they've earmarked funds to take care of their part, and so we'd really like to make sure that this happens. I'd like to, if possible, invite any of the others that are of our group that would like to address, that may be on your list, to come up, specifically Scott Johnson and Amber Johnson have a poster with some pictures if you'd like to see some of the issues that are there. But we'd really like to see the city move on something that apparently was already in the budget and I have heard is maybe back in the budget now, to make sure that things are safe for our kids as come wintertime. Thank you, council. And again, if we can have maybe some of the others from our group speak here, just consecutive. Thank you.
Next would be Amber Johnson.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
I'm Amber Johnson and I live at Seventy-One Sixteen Loch Ness Avenue, West Valley City. I would just like to first thank you guys for considering allocating the money to help get this process going for us. It has been an issue for us for several years. I've been involved at Orchard Elementary and Orchard Elementary is located at Sixty-Seven Forty-Four West, Thirty-Eight Hundred South. I've been there, I've been PT president for four years, I am currently serving as community council chair and I've been involved with community council going on for four years. And I just, I really felt it's important, the reason I got involved is primarily, I love being with the children, but to make sure things are running smoothly and the kids have a safe and great place to work and have time to learn. But this has been a concern for us, as long as I've been on the council, it always gets brought up. As soon as the snow flies, this, the snow compacts on this ramp and it's icy, our janitor works really hard to get snow removal out there, but he possibly can't get it. We've put ice down, we've tried to change the flow of the traffic and we've tried other ways to make it better, but it hasn't worked. I'm here now to address an issue and along with this, the map that's here, the district gave us as a council, three options, and as a council, we decided that this was the best. And it would give us an extra crossing walk, because during the snow, because parents don't want to go down into our ramp and out and have the chance of getting stuck, because the cars just slide and the tires spin, they'll send their kids across the street and they're running in and out of the traffic and the snow and it's icy and there's no crosswalk in front of our school. So that's the option, that the district would come out and help us and hopefully with the help of the West Valley City to get a new crosswalk right in front. It goes right up the ramp from our school to keep our kids safe. The snow packs in on the parking lot and quickly becomes a slippery mess. Cars trying to exit the parking lot will get stuck going up the ramp, causing a backup of traffic as well. Meanwhile, kids are trying to get in and out of the school, as I said, as quickly as they can. Other parents not wanting to go down will drop off in areas that aren't safe for our kids. The risks are just too high for us, our children are at risk of getting hurt, property is at risk of getting damaged, and frustration is a high risk of getting out of hand. We cannot have any other winter without these risks simply, the safety of our children and patrons are too valuable to us. Please help us get the construction of our new parking lot completed before the storm flies, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Scott.
All right, my name is Scott Johnson, live at Seven-One-One Six Loch Ness Avenue. I'm here mainly, I guess, for call of commentary. I've had kids, I have four amazing kids, they've all gone through Orchard Elementary, this is our twelfth year of having kids there. Every year, I'm one of the designated pushers, the ones at the end, bottom of the hill that's pushing the cars up. We've experienced it every year, we've seen these cars get close, they skid backwards, the kids are trying to dart in between them, crossing the roads where they shouldn't be. It's, it's a really dangerous situation, usually, luckily I work from home, so I'm able to stand there and help push these cars out, but this is my last year in Orchard Elementary, since my kid is in sixth grade, my youngest. And so I'd either have to pass the torch or we'll have to get this road built so that we can get someone else to push these people. So it's really important to us, we want to make sure our kids are safe, and we've got amazing teachers and faculty at our school and we just want it to be a safe place for them to be. So thank you.
Thank you. Terry Bishop.
Terry Bishop, Thirty-Five Twenty-Eight Vespa Drive. I'm here about the Boart Longyear that wants to come on the other side of my backyard. And my husband and I drove to their current place and it is gravel, it's weed coming through the gravel, there's garbage all over, and the big, huge machines that are all rusty that they might use once a year, once every couple of years. It is a terrible eyesore. When we bought our home in nineteen-eighty-seven, there was, on the other side of our backyard, a very long area of grass, beautiful trees, there's a lot of grass in that area around those industrial buildings, and it just doesn't seem to make any sense to us that we would rip out grass and trees to put in gravel and let the weeds grow through it, for a company that we don't want this eyesore in West Valley, and we certainly don't want it in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the list of people who have signed up, that's not where we stop, if there's other people who would like to come up and address this, we can do that.
Sorry, apparently I didn't sign on, signed in on the right list.
You're fine.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, my name, thank you for your time in addressing this today. My name is David Thorpe and I live at Twenty-Five Twenty-eight South Thirty-Four Sixty West. The purpose of my visit today is due to the conditional use application filed regarding the property located at Twenty-Four Fifty-Five South Thirty-Six Hundred West, merely a couple of blocks away from American Prep and currently in my backyard as well. The application information for reference is C-27-2016, if you haven't chotted it down before. In the application, a tenant, not the owner, Boart Longyear, is requesting to make changes to the property that borders residential areas. The proposed changes would eliminate all green space on the property and put in a gravel yard, as been established earlier. The gravel yard, although horrendous enough to cause concern to individuals in the city and those in the residential areas directly adjacent to the property, will then be filled with the junkyard of large equipment that will sit on the gravel yard. They will also be moving all drilling materials into this facility, but they have assured us, not by contract, but by the word of an executive, there will be no explosive housed in this facility, although this is a drilling company, and drilling companies use dynamite to drill. Where I work with, contracts are enforced by the contract, not by someone's guarantee. I grew up in West Valley City adjacent to this property when it was nothing but a field of weeds. I, along with my wife, we decided to build our dream home in the hopes of helping West Valley become a better city to live. I received two bachelor's degrees from the University of Utah in finance and information systems. And my wife received her undergraduate degree from the University of Utah and her master's degree from Brigham Young University. I currently work as a director of business intelligence and recently adopted our second and third child out of the U.S. foster care system. Our oldest child was also adopted and has problems with asthma. For him, a gravel pit in the backyard would be a disaster. My wife and I now live directly adjacent to this property, as I mentioned previously, and the quality of life and life of our family, the quality of life our family enjoys will be destroyed if this application is approved. My children will not be able to play outside, except on the calmest of days, due to the dust or that might even the smallest breeze. We will be forced to move out of our home, where we were awarded a West Valley Green and Beautiful Award in two thousand fourteen. We will not be moving into another home in West Valley, as with approval of this application, West Valley will be shouting to us, we do not want to be clean and beautiful. Simply put, allowing an eyesore to be placed in the city will be detrimental to the adjacent neighborhoods and West Valley as a whole. A visual view of their current property is located on Google Earth at Twenty-Seven Hundred West and California Ave in Salt Lake City. I have the exact URL if anyone is interested, but it's long and tedious to read. Currently, this is under review by the City Planning Commission. If or when this comes before you, please vote against, C-27-2016. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. By the way, you were on the list, I just jumped over you by accident, so. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? We'll close the public comment period and we'll turn to the city manager for any comments or assistant city manager.
Thank you, sir, I just like to make one comment, for the council's sake, this has been on the planning, uh, Planning Commission's agenda, it was continued, there's gonna be a review of this again on September fourteenth, I believe, you've all been notified, we certainly are making note and we will, are you aware that it has been continued and they'll be discussing?
Yes.
Yes, that's what.
It is a conditional use situation where that means that you can denigrate some of these harsh things there. So I would also encourage you, like I, like this evening, this is the way this works. So your attendance here is great, and your input is also needed in those planning commission meetings where you can, where you're supposed to be here too. So I would just say that to these folks.
Any comments from the city council members?
Just a question on Orchard Elementary, as I remember that, that whole parking lot is below the street level, isn't it? So even if we finish the street to the west, which goes nowhere other than the end of the property for Orchard Elementary, we'd still have a, an up ramp to get out of it.
The, the pattern is to exit further north on the side, so it's, so the, so the grade is much lower going up that finished road.
So it is a lower grade going up that road. The road that we would finish doesn't go anywhere beyond the end of the property, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council members?
I'll just make a comment about Orchard Elementary. I've had conversations with Dave for over a year on, on this, and, and also have talked with our, our public works director, and he knows that it's important to me, and now he, I asked Dave actually to come and, and express their, their need, and so now they understand that where we're all coming from on this, and, and Russ is aware of it, and hopefully we can work to a resolution here quickly, so thank you.
We have two resolutions on our agenda tonight, and I'll turn the time over to Assistant City Manager Paul Isaac to go over that first one.
Thank you, sir. The first resolution is to approve a sponsorship contract with Land of Frost. Land of Frost is a food distributor to many grocery stores, and in the past, I don't know how many years, but they frankly have been associated with us for many years, but they, how they choose to advertise their products is they sponsor local recreational programs. So this particular resolution is allowing them to do that again, and they will pay essentially the Parks and Rec Department $12,000 for this, for the privilege of being able to sponsor these recreational programs.
Okay, we have this item before us. It's been a great partnership. See their banners on all of the fences, the softball diamonds, and on the, printed on the jerseys of the kids, so it's been a great partnership, so we have a, a motion.
I move for approval of resolution 16 dash 133.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any discussion to the motion? We'll have a real call vote.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
It's real tricky tonight if we have three to one, right? Next item is another resolution. This is actually for, to purchase some new firearm for our police department.
Mr. Thank you, this, to improve the, the safety of our officers, the police chief has recommended that we purchase about 250 Zic Power P320 pistols for our police department. As maybe, maybe many of the residents are aware, we, we have several new officers on, on site, and the current platform we use, if you will, the service weapon varies. So this particular resolution is to get us into, have a consistent primary weapon that all officers would use, and, and thereby improve the safety of the officer, because in theory, if they get into a situation where, heaven forbid, an officer may be down, another officer could literally pick up this particular service weapon, because it's the same weapon that they are using, and be able to utilize that weapon. This particular weapon is very versatile, it has different ways you can have grips with respect to how you, the particular officer's hand, for example, can, the grips themselves can be adjusted. So this cost of this would be about $44,000. It's coming out of the existing budget and it would improve officer's safety.
Thank you. Any discussion or a motion on this resolution?
Just have a question. Mr. Isaac, this was proposed by the chief of police, but it's been approved and supported by administration, correct? Oh, yes, sir, thank you. With that, I'll move for approval of resolution 16 dash 134.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any discussion to that? Seeing then, we'll have a real call vote.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have on our consent agenda just two items. These are typically very common things. These are both temporary grants of access for different projects, so we normally handle these together, so I'll turn the time over to the council and take care of that. Move for approval of the two items on a consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing then, we'll have a real call vote.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have a need for an executive session?
No, sir, thank you.
We have one more motion. We'll adjourn. Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.